Alvin Persick?
Here.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Here.
Alderman Evans?
Here.
Alderman Ker- um, Kerwin?
Here.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Here.
Alderman Tudor?
Here.
Alderman Studer?
Here.
All present, you have a forum. We have a regular meeting in the Wilmington City Council on November 18th, 2014. Now, session, council will have to approve the minutes on November 4th, November 5th.
Mr. Mayor, viewed the minutes and found no errors, and I take a motion to accept the minutes presented in the presentation on file.
Motion, Val, and Studer. Second. Second, Val, and Larry Hall, any discussion?
It's just a simple, a simple error.
Did you find it?
Yeah, page three, and co-chairs Helen Happy and Kirby Hall.
Ooh, oh! I thought that was changed.
Sorry, it's been coming out.
That should be... There it is. Uh, Alderman Studer, Alderman Studer, you take your motion and...
I amend my motion to accept the minutes with the, uh, with your correction.
Correction?
Correction on page three.
And Larry Hall, you can say it.
Yes.
Fair enough, both of you. Alderman, uh, Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Uh, all yes, motion passes with correction.
Thank you.
All right, mayor's support. I have several things. We'll start with the list first. Uh, first, I'd like to have an update on the program and services of United Way, the partner agencies. Uh, Mike Hennessy is here to present that to us.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and guests. My name is Mike Hennessy. I'm the president, CEO for United Way, Will County, and it's honored to be here to update the city of Wilmington on the services our partner agencies provide to your residents every day. At your place, while you were in session, executive session, I handed out three things. One is a map of Will County, and it shows the logos of our 45 partner agencies. Uh, the second is these, what we call our partner agency, agencies service, listing of our agencies, as well as the programs and services they provide. And then the service statistics report for the city of Wilmington for 2013. And I just want to take a few minutes to, first, focus on what our local United Way is about. There are roughly 1,200 of us across the country, but we're all independent organizations, governed by a local board of directors. Everywhere in this country, United Way is called, United Way of something. And that something signifies the service territory they're responsible for. In our case, we're a countywide United Way. And when you look at our logo, and you'll see it, uh, on whether it's the partnership that we have at no cost with the NFL or other national organizations that provide free advertisement, it looks like a little red Y with a dot in the middle of our logo. Well, that really represents, as we speak, individuals who are guests in our Daybreak Homeless Center operated by Catholic charities. Because of the cold weather, we know that that facility is at capacity. Typically, in their senses, 25 to 30 percent of the guests in the Daybreak Homeless Center are children. October was Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and our Guardian Angel Community Services Groundwork Program, again, a shelter, is a safe haven for women who are victims of domestic violence and their children, yet in capacity. Traditionally, there are 20 to 35, 20 to 25 percent of the guests in the groundwork program are children. That person in need represented many of your young residents who, after school, were involved in after-school programs, whether it's the YMCA, whether it is a measure through Big Brothers and Big Sisters working with them. Uh, it could be involved in some of our other community centers further to the north. But that young, that person in need also represents a senior right here in Wilmington who received a home-delivered meal provided by the Senior Services Center, perhaps are involved in our concrete program. There are residents in the community who are underinsured, who have no health insurance, and the Will County Community Health Center or the Will Burney Medical Clinic providing care to a resident in this town. That person in need in our logo represents one in four residents in Will County that will reach out for service today and tomorrow. The hand underneath that person in need in our logo are the helping hands, the 45 partners right next door here, Trinity Services, one of our agency partners. Those 45 hands are there to provide over 100 programs and services to not only residents of Wilmington, but the other communities throughout Will County. And the rainbow on top of that person in need in our logo is a rainbow of hope that one provides through their financial support and their volunteer support, helping those helping hands to provide care to people in need. Now, this year, our countywide goal is $3,762,001. And two-thirds of that, that support will come from individuals like you and me who give at work. And the other third comes from corporate support. Many of your larger companies, you know, that give, Dow, just to the north, or in fact, Lisa, your site leader is a member of our program and allocations team. And other companies give, and Mr. Persick, I remember, your dad was involved with Caterpillar and involved with our United Way and Caterpillar. You're on the list of all our top companies, traditionally have a United Way Workplace Campaign. It's one ask, one gift, in this case, to help so many organizations that do, that make a difference and enhance the quality of life, not only in Wilmington, but the other communities in Will County. And when he, and the visual that you have, you'll see these logos. Of course, right now, you'll be having the Salvation Army out there with ringing the bells, and Salvation Army has been a wonderful partner. Of course, Sunday was the anniversary of the tornado. They came through the southern part of our county, Grendy County, further south. Of course, the Red Cross is there always, whether it's a disaster, after a bit of fire would occur, they're there. Catholic charities in partnership with Kuzma Cottage and Working with Sister, and the Catholic charities will also provide the lead in terms of providing rental and utility assistance besides other programs that they provide. As I mentioned, next door, our neighbors, Trinity Services, Easter Sales, United Cerebral Policy, Cornice Belt Services. Not only do they have day programs, but residential programs for adults and, and young, and young guests, young residents. And then also, everywhere we go, we are finding individuals who have been touched by hospice. Joliet Community Hospice obviously provides care to that person who is dying, either in their home or in the residential program near the Joliet, it is a clear report, and hospice has been a partner. So you see these organizations, some are local-based, as well as nationally-based, but have local affiliates. They're truly providing care every day, not only in this community, but the other communities of Will County. And one last thing on this flyer, uh, or this map is the crisis line in Will County. Uh, the 24/7 helpline number, I know you have a link to your, uh, community health, uh, organization that works, and they have the 24/7 helpline number to help persons who may be alcohol, drug-dependent, other challenges young residents or adults face. Uh, it's a wonderful resource. We can pick up the phone anytime, morning, noon, and night. Someone always answers it. Uh, if someone is having a crisis, they can talk to that person, they're well-trained. And then you'll see on, on the second page, up on the top, you'll find on our flyer that willfindyouhelp.org, and it's on your website as well, to link a person. You can put in the zip code of Wilmington, put in a category of care, organizations that provide service to that category of care, food, shelter, clothing, counseling, et cetera. And then there'll be linkages, linkages to that organization. There's over 600 in their database, it's a great resource. We encourage companies to have it as part of their human resources program, and enhances our employee assistance program. And every day, Crisis Line will have a list of persons to call. We'll make sure they reach that individual. If they don't reach them by the end of the day, they have another number to call to make sure things are going well. On, on the last page, you'll see the service stats report. All the agencies refund, track the number of individuals they serve by every municipality. They're only recorded once. For example, Trinity or United Cerebral Policy has a residential program, and I know they do, scattered throughout the county. They're seeing that person every day, but they're only recorded once. That person can go to a different agency for different services. Example, you can have a young girl, she has a disability, and she's getting therapy, physical therapy, Easter suit. She could be involved in the Girl Scouts program. She could have a big sister working with her, their big brothers and big sisters. Because of the needs she has and her family has, Catholic charities may be helping her. And she may be in a YMCA after-school program. Five different organizations, but Sally is only counted once in each of those organizations. Good rule of thumb is one in four. Now, some people will re, have more needs and may see and be involved in an agency more often than someone else, but one in four is a pretty good number. And you can see the number of persons, the number of seniors who are reaching out to the Senior Services Center. You can see individuals who are involved with, whether it's Big Brothers and the Six Sisters, the Boy Scouts, 4-H is very popular, especially in the southern part of our county. A lot of people are involved in 4-H programs, and the list goes on and on. So needless to say, we are, through our agencies, are touching the lives of individuals right here in this community, enhancing the quality of life, and we're grateful to have that continued partnership with your community. As I mentioned earlier, Lisa's on, Lisa Cashwell Sanchez, who's a site leader at Dow in your, your community, and about 50 some other volunteers give their time to serve at our program and allocations committee. So rest assured, every agency you see listed has to go through a very careful review process. They have to show what they're doing is making a difference in the lives of people they care for. They have to be able to share how they know that and how they measure success, just like you measure success in everything you do, your staff does, for the, for the community. And then a new agency that asks, is asking for support, has to show what they're doing is not a duplication of effort. Even though we've been challenged the last couple of years, and revenues have declined, we've lost a lot of our larger supporters due to retirement. A lot of our large heroes have retired, we're trying to replace that support through individuals who are newly hired, uh, because as I mentioned earlier, two-thirds of what we raise each year to help our local community agencies help individuals who give at work, and the other third comes from corporate support. But given that we did have to reduce support, you'll see, and getting back on the front of the map, two organizations. One is the Cancer Support Center that we had it two years ago. Uh, they have an affiliation with Silver Cross Hospitals Cancer Center. Uh, they open, have an office in McKenna and are further expanding their offices throughout Will County. But they'll provide support and care to that person that's going through cancer treatment, uh, talking to cancer survivors, helping any individual, helping their family, and it's been a wonderful compliment to the agencies that we currently support. The last one is bounce-back social services. Uh, as our veterans are returning home after keeping our country safe, some are facing some challenges. And this is a group of veterans who are providing counseling to other veterans. Uh, we do have agencies like Trinity, Catholic charities, they have counseling programs. But this is unique in that a veteran is helping to counsel another veteran. They know what they, he or she has gone through and can help them in their adjustment. They came before our volunteer panel, Lisa and our other volunteers, to give their time to screen our agencies in the spring and welcome them as a new partner agency. So that's our story. That's what we're about. 45 organizations providing services. And I highlight a few of the organizations that are touching residents right here in your community. I know you're familiar with many of them. Uh, we're grateful for your continued support. We look forward to working with Tony and his staff. We hope, uh, that they'll be able to help us with an employee campaign for the Public Services Act. Kirk Carrolls, many of you may know, who is the village manager from Lenage, shares our public service division. And, um, also, who you know, Steve Quigley with Will County Governmentally, is a member of our public service division. And Joe Pluger with ASME, who happens to be on our board, as well as also a member of our public service division. And then we work also with Joe Formos, Chief Formos, with the, uh, happens to be with the Joliet Fire Department, but he helps us with all the fire departments, the independent fire districts. And then Fred Hayes, who is, uh, village of Elwoods, Chief of Police, also serves on the community, helping to reach out to our friends in the various police departments. So we covered, and then, and also that we have, uh, Joe Waltz from the township, or Troy Township, will help us with all the other townships. So we get every public sector involved, and, uh, we're very grateful for support. And let me just stop here and answer, mayor, and council, any questions to make about our, uh, local United Way and the agencies we support.
Has anybody ever asked, like, would, like, we have the organization here, Will County, called, um, the Care Guide?
Correct.
Has anybody ever thought about, brought that up to you?
Oh, yeah, I know Sister very well, and, um, they do have, they have a partnership with Catholic charities. Sister and Kuzma Cottage has never applied directly for support from us. Indirectly, they will receive an allocation, at least they have over the years. We coordinate what's also called Emergency Food and Shelter Grant. It comes under FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency, and it's an allocation under the Emergency Food and Shelter Appropriation from the federal government. It's about $200 million that is distributed to jurisdictions across the coun- country that you're calling. We get an allocation, and last year was about $350,000. It supplements the shelters for the homeless, Daybreak, Groundwork Program, for Guardian Agent Community Services, the Morning Stair Mission. It provides rent utility systems, Catholic charities for the rent, uh, Will County Center for Community Concerns for the utilities. And then we also partner with Northern LA Food Bank. And they work with about 60 different pantries. Kuzma Cottage would be a certified, on its cause of, a certified pantry under Northern LA Food Bank, which would help them get food at a reduced cost or no cost. And then, in the years gone by, they would receive some appropriation to help with rental assistance. And I remember Sister and George, who used to be with them before George passed away a few years ago, they used to always come to the, to the meetings. But to answer to your question, they never applied directly as an agency partner. They're welcome to...
So they could, they could, but they, excuse me, they can't with the work needed problem?
They can. All an agency has to do, when they come before us, is to show what they're doing is not a duplication of efforts, currently funding, and then we would welcome them. If they're already partnering with an existing agency, if they're already helping support, perhaps Sister calling, and I'd be more than happy to. We, we've communicated over the years, I've known her, I've been with our United Way, 25 years I've known Sister, going back into the early 90s. Sometimes it's just the simple fact of, the, the giving within the community to the Kuzma Care Guide, that need is not really needed from United... From others, sorry. That's, that's a good point, mayor. I think that's really key. But we do, I mean, you bring up a good point, because we look at every, every agency's financial support, all our organizations have an independent audit conducted, and some are more blessed than others, they have other resources and may not need to draw from, uh, the United Way Community Fund. Correct. Based on priorities and that. But I'd be more than happy to talk with her further, have her give you a call. Be good to get caught up in how things are going. Anything else I can share? I know I've taken my, more than time.
I did have, but, um, you, you got 45, um, partners here. You don't, the United Way doesn't support their entire budget, you're right?
Oh, no.
You just put a small percentage into each of these, right?
That's correct. And to your point, Frank, that, uh, we look at all their incomes and expenses, and some of our agencies have more sources than others. And then we look at, based on history, what their need is, and then decide accordingly. So that when one gives to their United Way campaign, they're sure that's going where the need is greatest, and they have many individuals who are there to do process.
Well, I guess one of the things that you can help clear up for us is, you know, there's always been, um, a talk about, uh, what's United Way's administrative costs is, what, how much is every dollar is getting back to the...
90/10, great ratio.
90 cents.
Yeah.
That's good to hear. See, everybody needs to know that.
Oh, yeah, and the money stays here, it stays in your community. I mean, we, we meet, Better Business Bureau has 20 philanthropic standards, and every group that you work with, ask them if they've been certified at Better Business Bureau. We meet all 20 philanthropic standards, which is the highest you can achieve. Usually their ratios are 65/35 or better. We're at 90/10, which is pretty good. And, uh, and our agencies, we try to keep them within 80, 20, 75, 25, 85, 15. And some that maybe veer a little bit higher, uh, on administrative side, we ask what we're doing from the governance standpoint to be more prudent with the dollars they get. But you've got a lot of people, uh, that are involved in our governing board, our campaign cabinet, our program and allocations committee, that really take their time and give, uh, a lot of time to us, that saves us dollars that can go. And the other thing we're seeing in need trend is more and more companies are doing days of caring. You all do that, where you give your time, roll up your sleeves to help in giving back and volunteer projects, and that saves our agencies dollars by things that companies can do, organizations can do, clean up painting, landscape work, et cetera, that they can use their dollars primarily for their mission, which is providing care to people that are charged responsible for. So I hope they, hope they answered that.
Yeah, and I, and I wanted you to get that up there, because it's, it's important that you let everybody know what kind of, you know, dollars you're giving back to these, uh, these services that you're collecting.
Right, and, and that's why, too, the list of the service stats, it should, because people are amazed, you may not see a lot of visible presence of centers or buildings, the bottom line is services rendered. And that's what you see, are numbers of people who are touched every day in care. And, um, anything else I can share with you? I think it's very good. I think it's, sometimes this is kind of like a, uh, almost a wake-up call to see how many, how many people in the area, um, really rely on these services that are out there. You don't realize how many services are out there. Um, I happen, my, my wife happens to work for Aunt Martha, or does work for Aunt Martha, so I'm very aware of how United Way Partners would, you know, these types of social groups. But to see all this type, these, these agencies and how they, um, impact the people here in Wilmington and, and you see them within the, uh, you know, unincorporated areas, because I'm sure they'll probably include it in there, too. But to see that type of service and to know that those services are available, you know, it's much easier to, you know, be able to swallow and stuff like that, see those people get those type of services. Thank you, thank you. Sure, and, and as you know, Aunt Martha just opened up a new community health center. Correct. Just on the old campus of Silver Cross Hospital, too. Joe, I think she, she was actually in charge of that for a while. She was? Oh, that's wonderful. And that, of course, with that community health center, the Will County Community Health Center, and then what we affectionately call the Free Clinic, the Will Burney Medical Clinic, where a wide range of services available to people who are underinsured, have no insurance, and assist with their medical, medical needs. Anything else? Thank you for all the good that you do, and appreciate your time, and we value our partnership together, and we move forward to help your local residents. Thanks again. Have a great Thanksgiving holiday, and a happy Christmas, happy holiday, and happy New Year. Did all those in one, because hardly, it's right around the corner. Unless you could say you're gonna bring us warm weather. I wish you could.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much. All right, thanks. All right, next on this is, uh, something we've been working with the chamber, we haven't seen in a while, that our business showcase, which is Absolute Home Care. Are they here tonight? Uh, so if you'd just might come up and, uh, let us, you know, give us kind of a brief bio on your business, what you do and what you provide to the city. Let us tell your names, too, so we...
Yeah, I'm just gonna leave that while she's talking. I'm Monica, this is Donna, we're from Absolute Home Care Plus. We are a new non-skilled home care agency right here in Water Street, Wilmington. Um, we both have a big background in the medical field. Donna has about 30 years under her. Um, I personally have about 13 years in home health care exclusively. We decided that, together, that we felt that there was a need for our services here in the area, especially, um, excuse me, especially a agency to focus primarily on patient care. Uh, our agency is family-owned and operated. We do service Will, Grendy, and Kankakee Counties. We are licensed by the Illinois Department of Public Health, and we carry both general professional liability as well as we are bonded. Uh, our agency is committed to providing high-quality, client-centered, affordable home care services to our clients, um, to help them lead dignified and independent lives in the comfort and safety of their own homes. We do this by providing services into their homes, such as personal care, which can be shower, bathing, grooming, um, you know, all different ADLs. Uh, we also do companionship, socialization, meal preparation, medication reminders, light housekeeping, numerous services. We do transportation, we can take them to doctor's appointments, we can run errands, grocery shop for them. Um, another service that we do provide that's a little bit different than a lot of other home care agencies, is we do what we call chore services. In the winter months, we can shovel and salt their sidewalks, we can, in the spring and summer, mow and rake leaves, you know, we have employees to do all those types of services. Um, our agency does hire all of our own employees, we do not contract out for any of them. So there, we personally screen them, um, and select them based off of their experience and their commitment to providing care to our patients. All of our caregivers work under us, so therefore they're kind of, they're, they're our name. So if they don't provide service like I would like to my grandma, then I don't really want them to provide service for our agency, kind of bluntly said. Um, they are fingerprinted, we do fingerprint background checks on them all, and we do have a training program that we put them through. We do, um, inservice them for Alzheimer's, dementia, multiple different diagnoses. And we actually just did signed contracts with about 25 different long-term care insurance policies. Uh, some of the big ones that we have are Mutual of Omaha, John Hancock, all of them are, uh, policyholders can provide services to them, uh, under their own insurance. Other than that, we are working with the state to provide services to them through state programs, like community care programs and Department of Rehab Services. And also, we're working with the VA to provide services through the Heinz VA programs. Uh, so all those are work, in the works with, so hopefully we'll get those up and running really soon. And another big thing that we are kind of doing, because the services are expensive and a lot of times, patients have to do them on their own, pay for the services on their own, we are trying to form a program just within our agency to service low-income patients to help them out, uh, because we kind of want everybody who needs services to be able to give them. That's very important to us. So we are, um, it's kind of a little bit about business, what we do, who we are. And another, aside from the company, another part of it is we do have part-to-part, which we do provide CPR courses, we provide them to all of our employees, and we do it to also to individuals, professionals, and businesses in the area. We can run them and host them in our office, which we will be setting a schedule for soon. We can also give them for businesses in their facilities as well. So, any questions or anything I can...
How many employees do you currently have?
We currently have about eight, eight caregivers. Some of them are PCA's, what we consider patient care assistants, and some of them are certified nursing assistants. Um, we kind of, we're just starting out, we just actually opened our doors and got our license at the end of August, and our big thing is, is we didn't want to over-hire, so we want to be able to provide employment and opportunities for the patient, or the employees that we currently have. So that's kind of where we're at right now.
Really glad you're here, man.
Yeah.
It's nice to know.
Perfect. Anything else I... Well, thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next, uh, item on the agenda is the need of resolution in regards to adopting the county all, all hazards mitigation plan.
I moved to approve Resolution number 2014-09, Resolution adopting the countywide all hazards mitigation plan.
Motion by Alderman Persick, if you have a second. Second, Val, if you have any discussion. Brief explanation there, Tony.
Yeah, Dennis Housman, Director of Justice, brought this in. Um, this, this is a renewal of what we signed in the past. They've updated the mitigation and has the plan. This, by us being participants in this, we are then part of the overall Will County Response Plan. And so this is just a renewal of that, what's been passed. So we got it from, from, from...
All right, any further discussion? Go call both, please. Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes. All right, next I have, uh, a motion on the mayoral appointment of part-time police officer Gregory Edgarbrack. Um, Gregory has served 30 years of law enforcement in part-time, and 30 years EPS and PTO, and comes as the recommendation of, uh, Chief Arnold, all backgrounds, everything else in regards to... Does anybody got that motion?
Yes, I have it, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the mayoral appointment of part-time police officer. Gregory Edgarbrack.
Sorry, I don't have his name in front of me. That's all right. Um, I have motion by Alderman Van Dyne, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Val, and Tudor, any discussion? Go call both, please. Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, also, I'd like to make an announcement that the Lions Club on Sunday, November twenty-third, one forty PM, at the Dagoban Holiday Garden, is on the three community Thanksgiving dinners. Carryouts available, also home deliveries are available, but they need, there's a number to fill by November sixteenth, and they will be accepting donations, but they are not necessary. And also, the Wilmington Lions presents the Island Christmas on the North Island, our annual lighting display that they do every year, which I'm sure they'll, they improve upon every year, because nicer and nicer every year, so if you have the opportunity, you'll have to see that. That opens on the twenty-ninth, which is the same night as the Christmas Parade, the Champion Christmas Parade, which is also on the twenty-ninth, so we got that going on as well. And the Will County Governmental League, as many guys may remember, by a bit about three years ago, there was a referendum question on the ballot for municipalities to what they called the opt-in program, which was to partner together to get an electrical aggregation service, or introduce trade on their electrical aggregation. The motion that represented passed here as well, did pass in several other municipalities. So what was created, the Governmental League was what we called the opt-in program, where these units, where the Governmental League would actually go out and solicit for utility rates, or lower utility rates, using the municipalities that were in the opt-in program, which I believe was us, I think it was Diamond, Menucha, Lomine, and also Joliet, so you have some large municipalities part of this opt-in program. When all the bids and everything came in, basically they were all higher than what Tom Edred was this year. So basically, they're not gonna move forward with the opt-in program this year, but they do encourage, like I always do, we always encourage through the deregulation of electricity, to take the time in, and we'll see what type of electrical aggregation rates are out there. Sometimes they don't meet what Tom Ed's currently is, stay with Tom Ed's rates, they're a lot good for the entire year, so I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that in regards to the opt-in program. I say in the mayoral report, we all know our local Wilmington team is down to the final four, hosting Byron this Saturday, we all wish them good luck in, absolutely, their last Saturday's game was definitely exciting, you know, I can't say what I was done, because I think I scrolled to the ground, but no, it was very neat to watch, it's very neat to see them be there again. I happen to remember back in two thousand and three, going through the same thing, so it's, it's, it's permanent excitement to see them happen, see this happening again, happen to the boys, to get to where they're at, and to see the community support that always comes out of football teams, no matter what the weather is, it's truly tremendous, so we're definitely, we're looking to the Lions. Good luck for next Saturday. And that's all I have under the mayoral report, so the next item on the agenda is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments today?
I hope all of you have a very nice Thanksgiving, and I plan on seeing you downstairs to watch your board become state champs.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thanks, Sheriff. Any other citizens' comments today? All right, moving along, mining zoning has a special meeting coming up on November twentieth, at six o'clock PM, in regards to a second line for, oh, here it is, right? Yes, Albridge. All right, committee reports, Billy Brown, Parks, Health, and Safety, Alderman Persick, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, December tenth, two thousand and fourteen, at six PM.
Water Sewer Streets and Alley Committee, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Kerwin.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution number two thousand and fourteen dash ten, a resolution authorizing striped arby for the Mikolowski property portion of Jefferson Street.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Kirby Hall, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Hi, Mr. Mayor, I have another one here. I move to approve the quote in the amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars from Durasio Ford for a new vehicle for the water treatment plant.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second? Second, second by Alderman Persick, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
No.
Seven yes, one no, motion passes.
Okay, I got one more here. I move to approve the pay request and change order final, in the amount of sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and nineteen cents payable to Brent Builders for the Vine Street and River Street Water Main Replacement Project.
Motion by Alderman Kerwin, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Persick, any discussion? I can't say that the, talk to the Kobe that the residents were extremely happy when we got that line replaced. I think it used to be a one-inch main, or one of those houses at the church?
Right.
One-inch service line, now it's a four-six.
It's a four-inch.
Four-inch.
So.
Yeah, they probably haven't had water like that, like for...
I'm sure they haven't. And the one, one thing I do want to make, bring to you guys' attention, that project came in eighteen hundred dollars under the price we got from Brent Builders, which was thirty-two hundred dollars under the budget number we had for the project.
Wow, saving them.
They did a great job out there, they saved some dollars. About five million, about five million, it was thirty-two hundred, thirty-two hundred, thirty-two hundred, yeah.
And the residents are happy and they got a bigger line. It's a good thing.
No more questions. All right, roll call both.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, December tenth, two thousand and fourteen, at five thirty PM.
Police and Equity Committee, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Tudor.
Mr. Mayor, I have the first one here. Move to approve the request to replace the open full-time police officer position.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Roll call both.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, December ninth, two thousand and fourteen, at five thirty PM.
Finance and Innovation Land Act, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Tudor.
The first one, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the accounts payable reported dated November eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen, in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, sixty-five dollars and ninety-three cents, and the October thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen collector's report in the amount of three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and five cents.
Motion by Alderman Stuter, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I have the rest. Approve ordinance, I move to approve ordinance number fourteen dash eleven dash eighteen dash zero one, an ordinance providing for the issue of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars general obligation limited bonds, series two thousand and fourteen, of the city for the purpose of financing improvements to facilities of the city, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding obligations of the city, and paying the expenses incident thereto, and providing for the levy in collection of a direct annual tax for the payment of the principal of and interest on said bonds.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Larry Hall, any discussion?
Wow.
The bonds didn't get sold at a rate of?
One point nine percent.
One point nine percent. Grandy Bank can pick them up. Roll call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Okay, move to approve the employee benefits two thousand and fifteen renewal with Infinity Benefits Group LLC.
No, we're not doing that tonight. Joey, head on here, you guys recommend to go to December second.
Okay, so I'm gonna scratch that.
That's fine.
And rescinding that motion.
Yeah, there's no second.
No, there was not. Moving right along. Announcement, the estimated annual tax levy of the year two thousand and fourteen will be placed on file for public viewing prior to the public hearing scheduled for December second, two thousand and fourteen. Next, I move to approve the quote in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars from funding electric for the transfer switch for backup generator for the water treatment plant.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Steve Robbins. Any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
No.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no, motion passes.
The next regular scheduled, scheduled meeting is Tuesday, December sixteenth, at six PM.
Order to license. Alderman Kirby Hall, Alderman Evans.
Mr. Mayor, the first motion, I move to approve ordinance number fourteen dash eleven dash eighteen dash zero two, an ordinance for the retail sale of bottled wine and wine tasting events.
Motion by Alderman Kirby Hall, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Evans, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
All yes, motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I approve the ordinance number fourteen eleven dash eighteen dash zero three, an ordinance updating provisions of chapter one twelve of the municipal code of ordinances imposing restrictions on sale of alcoholic beverages.
Motion by Alderman Evans, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kirby Hall, any discussion? Roll call both, please.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Stuter?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, December ninth, two thousand and fourteen, at five thirty PM.
Personnel collective bargaining, Alderman Larry Hall, Alderman Persick? Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor, but we do have an executive session for personnel. City administrative support, Mr. Grant. All right, defer over, Kobe's got a couple of updates.
Yeah, basically, what we talked about a minute ago, the Vine River Street Water Main Project is complete over there, that's good, good work out of Brent Builders, it's good pricing, so save us some money and hopefully this rubs off onto our bid opening for the fifty-three Water Main Project on Thursday. So, sounds like we got a, an interesting group of contractors out there that love to person work in the spring, since we pushed everything back to the spring instead of trying to move forward this winter, so we should have a bigger group of bids and find everything Thursday afternoon. The temp signals at South Hurst on fifty-three are out and operational. They modified some of the timing out there to coordinate with the signals at Petaon and fifty-three, so those are up and going. I've been out there a few times, watching, and everything seems to be moving along, you know, there's no discrepancy between the times, so...
They seem to be able to with traffic going on just off our...
Yes, it does, yes. They're not sitting there watching, moving out, so...
Yeah, just whipping out and...
Yeah. Those permit signals, the project they opened in the spring, so it was basically the layered project with these temp signals there, and, you know, over here going everything in the spring, and those permit signals that by this time next year, so...
Still fighting on both that and Petaon, those intersections, who is going out relatively same time?
Yes, yes, yeah. Got to coordinate with Robinson to get everything going with those plans, drop the owners on the south side of Petaon, so that's part of the work on tomorrow, so get that going, too.
We were rolling, please, you got me?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, talking with Haysar Green, the discussion, the signals warrant, the signals were warrant based on the standard traffic counts and movements out there from Kankakee to fifty-three, or North River, sorry, that we talked about at Lawson, but I have contacted them to discuss the site distance issues and the curve and the location of that intersection to see if something along those lines would warrant the need for permit signals at their, at this time. I've gone back and forth with them, they're doing some research or whatever else, so I should hear something back from them next week or so.
They're gonna actually put a scope and work together for you?
Yes, I'm asking for that, yeah. Right now, I'm just kind of talking to them, trying to get everything felt out, and then, you know, DB, and they'll give us a price to move forward with that proposal, too, so...
I think once we get that, I think it's something definite, we need to reach out to the county about and see, you know, that they can share the cost, we put already a good portion of the content towards the traffic study itself, and anyway. We're funding that right now, right, with Hering, this whole thing? Yeah, and I think, you know, there needs to be some involvement by county, we need to reach out to county and say, look, this is still primarily, this is a county road. We understand that there's, you know, how it's serviced, but for us to get, to really get an actual analogy on how this is gonna play out, I think county needs to get involved with, you know, at least cost sharing wise, putting, putting this plan together and everything else. Is that gonna be something that will possibly be reimbursable by the railroad if they go forward? That's, yeah, that's, I think, how we look at it, through the railroad and the ICC, you know, they've, they've come across with their numbers, their initial numbers, on what the cost would be related to, what they'd say those improvements would be by them, allowing them to close Kankakee River drag, and I think our numbers and their numbers are way, probably sort of eight hundred thousand dollars on, so... Yeah, they're at four seventy. So I think, and that's what, you know, we can say what we need all day long, but we have to provide that basis with these reports, naturally, you have to show, you know, you have to have something to back up the talking, so to speak, but at the same time, this is a county road, county needs to be helping with the costs associated with the engineering.
Has the river said anything to us about what the cost of the...
The only other indication was that, I'm assuming that probably there was a residential[1598.62]
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
Okay, move to approve the employee benefits, two thousand and fifteen renewal with Infinity Benefits Group LLC.
All right, I need a motion for executive session, Chris.
I make a motion to come out of executive session at eight thirteen.
Motion by Alderman Larry Hall, we have a second. Second by Alderman Tudor. Roll call both, please.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Alderman Studer?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Tudor?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Persick?
Yes.
Alderman Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Larry Hall?
Yes.
Alderman Kerwin?
Yes.
Alderman Van Dyne?
Yes.
Alderman Evans?
Yes.
Eight yes, motion passes.
I have the rest. Approve ordinance, I move to approve ordinance number fourteen dash eleven dash eighteen dash zero one, an ordinance providing for the issue of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars general obligation limited bonds, Series two thousand and fourteen, of the city for the purpose of financing improvements to facilities of the city, for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding obligations of the city, and paying the expenses incident